In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, this meeting has been called to order in accordance with Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the whole news Tribune, The Star Leisure, Highland Park Planet, and January 19, 2023, and was quoted on the Borough website at www.hbborrow.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Far exit are to my left and to my right of council chambers. Please speak into the microphone if you come up to make comments. As acting mayor, I preside over the council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comments or if the comments is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this public meeting, is repetitive or not on topic that is relevant to the Borough governing body. Harry, can you lead us in the pleasure religions?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho-hun.
Here.
Borough Attorney Shamira.
Here.
And Borough Administrator Holger.
Here.
It's now time for a public discussion session. The total added time is 21 minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has elapsed. She will give you a warning for 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at three minutes. Mark, make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if this statement is disruptive to the orderly conduct of public meetings, is repetitive or not on the topic of relevance to the Borough governing body. Please announce your name and address for the record and speak into the microphone if you come up to make comments.
Never shadow first. My name is Tim McKinnon, 201 South Second Avenue, apartment 38, Highland Park, New Jersey. I don't think I'll take the three minutes. I just want to express my esteem and my respect for all the councilwomen and men that are here today. But I think for me, this choice really comes down to, what are we going to do for our town, right? Do we really want to do something special? Something that sustains over time and evolves and develops and helps our town grow into the coming years? And for me, that answer would be, the best person for the job would be Councilmember Hirsch. I think, I'll call him Matt, but Matt has the relationships from a career that spans government policy, housing, communications. He has all the tools from those areas to excel in this role. He also has the expertise, he has the social relationships all around town. I see him trying and succeeding in making interroads all over town with all kinds of different groups of folks, and that's something to be well-respected. I often say about Councilmember Hirsch, you could text him at 11:30, he wouldn't know your name, but he'd come into a bogey to talk about some arcane policy. And then you probably couldn't stop him talking to you. So, I mean, the thing about him is he will eat, sleep, and breathe this job. I think he's spent years preparing, and I think he's ready, and I just hope you'll give him his shot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinell, 221 Harper Street. I'll also be very brief. I just want to say that over the last 20 years or so, we've had a kind of string of resignation and appointment. Is how people typically have become mayor and gotten, most of the current members of the Borough Council were originally appointed rather than elected. So I think a good way to break that cycle could be, I know that Councilman George has expressed that he would complete this term and then not seek reelection as an incumbent. And I think that would be a very positive development to kind of break this cycle of appointment and then running as an incumbent. Thank you.
Hello, Rob Bolsoff, 431 South Seventh Avenue. I want to thank all of you for your service and help work my volunteer my time to election mention every one of you. I'm also concerned about the cycle of being appointed and then running for reelection as an incumbent. I very much would like to see this put into the hands of the voters for the open primary. For that reason, I am supporting Phil George because he will retire. Phil's done a lot of good work for us. He showed himself to be very competent. But whoever wins, I will be on your side. Thank you.
Dominic Sermon, 221 Harrison Avenue. I have watched for many years different council members perform their duties. And I also would compliment everybody on this work. And for temporary mayor right now, very much. She's spent a lot of time in service of Highland Park. She should be complimented. Some of you I do not know. I'm very candid. So it may be unfair what I'm going to say, but I'm going to say it. I know one council member who I've known for probably 40 years. And his father before that, so I'm dating myself. Phil has always impressed me as a person who will take all sides of an issue, not just one for the time, but all sides of an issue and listen to it, give it thought, willing to discuss both sides of the issue and come up with a solution. I would try to convince Phil if he is given the position to stay beyond a year and to continue to serve the Borough. As I said, I've had nothing but glowing things to say about Phil and everybody who has dealt with Phil. But the important thing is he will listen to both sides and then help to make a decision.
Any additional comments? At this time, we'll close the public comment section. And we're going to move to fill the vacancy that we have. But before doing so, I'm going to, before taking a motion, I think, because I'm one of the persons that's going to be on this, I think I'm going to ask our attorney to take over from this section. To, I think we all should be given three minutes, all the candidates should be given three minutes to speak, three to five minutes. And our attorney, would you like to point out who would go next?
Thank you, Acting Madam Mayor. As you know, a vacancy occurred at the end of last year. The Mayor Gail Burrell-Mittler stepped down, and we have a vacancy in the position of mayor. The process was and is to contact the Highland Park Democratic Committee and request that three names be sent over for this governing body to consider appointing the mayor. The local committee did that and sent over three names. Those three names are the members of the council this evening. I believe it's Councilwoman George, Councilman Hirsch, and Acting Mayor Foster. Tonight, hopefully, a mayor will be selected. And I say hopefully because the law that governs this vacancy has a timeframe involved with it. The local committee did their job exactly the way they were supposed to within 15 days of the vacancy. The next step is to have this council do their job, hopefully, within 15 days of that or by January 30th. If we don't have a mayor appointed by January 30th, the statute would require that the municipal clerk contact the Middlesex County Board of Elections and a special election would have to be held for the election of a mayor for the remainder of this year. And we would hope to avoid that. So that being said, I would open the floor for any nominations to appoint the mayor for the remainder of 2023.
We didn't want it was to have each of the candidates say a few words.
Sure, if you would like to do that.
I guess we'd start down here.
Mr. George, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. First, I'd like to address my fellow council members and ask you for your vote for me to be interim mayor to fill out the remainder of the term. I've worked to express my dedication to Highland Park for everything from shoveling snow downtown in the storms to playing Santa Claus to working with everybody to try to reach compromises on some issues, to bring issues forward, and also to assist one another. A council member wants to bring a matter forward to work with our former mayor, Gail Burrell-Mittler, to move that forward. I have a passion for fairness, equity, and equality that comes from my family and my profession, and I bring that every time I pick up the phone, answer an email, or come to Borough Hall. I think I've contributed to the leadership in the town, especially in the interface we've had with infrastructure and state and federal regulations, which have been something of a problem and something of an opportunity over the last couple of years, especially with our water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure. I would like to continue to try and manage our residents' burden with the tax burden and try to meet some of the requirements that we have as well. And although I've just been elected to another term as council, I would like to serve as mayor and capstone. My experience is here in Highland Park, starting with prosecutor's position over 20 years ago and leading forward. And also supporting another councilperson, Councilwoman Carolyn Timmons, who in the years that she served. 2023 is going to be the year that we fill in details. The programs that we've started over the last 18 months for redevelopment, the nasty surprise of Stop &amp; Shop leaving have left us challenges that we have to infill now at this time. And I want to bring some ideas and creativity as well as some professional knowledge to try to resolve those problems. To the members of the public, I thank you for your support. I thank you for the support for voting for one of the three of us here that have the experience of having sat on council. Although I do intend to vote for myself and I think that I'm the best qualified. Let's remember that we have had, although we've had a series of successions for appointments, we've also had open elections. And Councilman Hale will remember that we sat through a contested primary with the only debate sponsored by the League of Women Voters that I know of in Highland Park history and actually participated in that. So we have had the elections. It's just that the process has consistently brought in an incumbent through the process, and the process is not ours. That process is set by law, and that's what we're stuck with. So I think we're at the end of an era, and I'm glad to be at the point of the beginning of a new era here in town. And I'm asking for the council's vote. Thank you.
Councilman Hirsch, would you like to make a statement?
Thank you, Borough Attorney. Hi, everyone. My name is Matthew Hirsch, and this is an interesting process that I think we're all involved in because there are three folks who are seeking to leave Highland Park. But you may not really know about it, which is a strange thing when one's going to become mayor. So I feel that introductions are in order as well as for the benefit of the council. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I've lived at 333 Felton Avenue since February of 2008. And I try each day to be the best husband and dad in the world. I have the best job in the world, fighting for affordable housing across New Jersey, and I have the amazing privilege of serving with you, my colleagues, as chair of the Arts and Recreation Committee, working on quality of life issues that affect Highland Park is daily. I serve Highland Park physically. I externally pop and serve popcorn at the outdoor movies and haul tables and chairs at the farmer's market. I table with my boards and commissions at street fairs and other public events. My family and I plant flowers on the planters on Main Street. We shop local, we dine local, we walk and ride bikes and play in the parks. We have three kids in the public schools. I've served on the Irving and Bartle PTOs. I'm on the board of the Highland Park Educational Foundation. I sometimes sing at the open mic nights at Pinots, and I'm told that I'm pretty good. I'm a lifelong writer and journalist at HARP. My first full-time job was as a news reporter at my hometown local paper. That gave me a unique perspective that showed me firsthand how local decision-making and local government impacts residents in real time. That perspective coupled with an innate calling toward justice led me to be a progressive, a coalition builder, and a political organizer to deal with some of the greatest housing and health obstacles that face our communities. Through coalition building, I've worked closely with the Murphy administration and advocates to enact lead poisoning prevention bills, funding for emergency rental protections, funding for affordable home production, and toward ending discrimination and bias in lending and property appraisals, just to name a few campaigns. I have strong relationships with mayors and other community leaders and neighboring towns as well as very strong relationships with our 18th legislative district representatives. And I have developed close working relationships with you, my esteemed colleagues. I've never tried to lead alone, and most of my successes on the council were done through careful and intentional collaboration with the community and with you, again, my colleagues. Some of those successes include parks improvements. We've conducted a top-to-bottom needs assessment for our pocket parks so they can be the community jewels that we need them to be. Immigration. I led an extremely challenging discussion around immigration in 2017, resulting in Highland Park's Sanctuary City designation, meaning that our local police would not assist immigration and Customs Enforcement in immigration actions. We also implemented a municipal ID program that still runs out of the library. Public housing. I helped lead the successful temporary ownership transition through a HUD program to finance necessary capital needs for our public housing. I secured state funding for the new track and field and funding for a new River Trail connector study. And housing affordability and rental home conditions are at the top of our priorities. Rent control, which I worked on closely with Councilman Hale, is just the first guardrail that we need to create a more stable housing environment. It's time for a new generation of leadership in Highland Park. I'm in this contest for Highland Park and nothing more than Highland Park. I have no visions of using this position as a stepping stone to anything other than creating a better Highland Park, a safer Highland Park, a more affordable Highland Park, and a more equitable Highland Park. We've been in the sub-context of political efforts that began when I was in college at Rutgers and before some of our even emerging leaders were even born. Take Andrew Dalton, who's here in the audience, who was recently honored at the Martin Luther King Junior Ceremony last week. Even at this young age, I feel I've been working with Andrew since he was in the middle school, fighting for the best environmental practices. We need to embrace his efforts and let him lead now while he's here because soon, he and others like Andrew are going to leave Highland Park to change the world. But he's going to do that because we nurtured him to do so. I share the sadness and fear of losing a grocery store, and this has to be our 2023 top priority. But I will not lead this discussion with fear, and negativity will have no role in building positive outcomes. However, criticism and questioning processes are welcomed, and they must be embraced. Helping neighbors understand how we can work together to reform processes is how we can be transparent, educate, be more equitable in our decisions, and build support. It's civics. I've met several times with many of our most vocal critics, and I would say each meeting has been quite positive on a human level because there was a clear mutual understanding. That's leadership. I'll pay close attention to the things that are important to the day-to-day existence of residents, roads, parks, snow removal, safety, events. And I'll work to provide ways to showcase our position as one of New Jersey's premier locations for arts and music. Strong public and administrative leadership is what we need now. I have deep roots in the community, and I believe I have the support of many constituencies. We need to leverage those relationships. We as a council need to leverage those relationships to build trust and allyship through transparency, engagement, and equity. But it's impossible to lead without community support. I think I'm the best candidate to lead and build broad public support. And I would very much like to take that challenge on as our mayor. Let's have fun and get things done. Thank you.
Madam Acting Mayor.
Okay. Well, good evening, and thank you all for being here. I have been in Highland Park now for 28 years. But I want to share with you a little bit about my journey of getting involved in our community. In mid-1970s, my family migrated from Jamaica to Newark, New Jersey. At that time, in my beloved country of Jamaica, we were going through political turmoil. We were terrified of going to school, to shop, to do any little thing that we were living through because there was an election going on, and it was completely corrupt. And gang violence was pervasive, and they were taking over everywhere. So we were on the brink of a coup in our country. And the terror that we saw as young kids trying to get to and from school or trying to get to and from shopping was just horrendous. We had young girls that would have gone missing, people getting chopped up, people getting killed because of political violence. We moved from Jamaica, and we came to Newark to live. And everything was fine. I was happy. I was safe. I felt secure. And then there was an announcement of an election. And all my fears came back flooding in. All of a sudden, I was scared. I was nervous. And I remember going to my mom and saying that we're going to have the same thing all over again. And she said, "That does not happen in the United States. That will never happen." I wasn't convinced, so my sister, my younger sister and I were scared. And we went the night of the election, and we hid after dinner. The reason why we hid because we were trying to tell them that the violence that we seen back home was going to happen. They didn't believe us. The next morning, early next morning, I crept out of my hiding place, and I went downstairs. I checked my parents' bedroom. They were fine. My brothers and sisters in their room, they were fine. In the dark, I went downstairs, and I looked out the window. There was no cars burning. There was nobody chopped up. There was no debt. There was no mayhem. I couldn't believe it. Eventually, I had the nerve to turn on the TV. And I turned on my TV, and I watched as the news came on, and it said that we had a new president. Jimmy Carter was elected President of the United States. And there was no mayhem, no, nothing. I sat there in the dark for a while. And that got me to start thinking about safety and how important it is that we are safe and how important safety is. And I made a pledge to myself that I would give back to this country and I would give back in my small way, and I would find a way to serve. Fast-forward all those years. I moved to Highland Park. I became involved with the PTO. I became involved with many groups and organizations, and eventually on the council. As of today, I've been on the council for 22 years, and I have watched my town grow and I have aided in the growth and the creation we have today. I am proud to be a part of the leadership that has driven this process for making changes, for example, in our Department of Public Works, for equal and equity employment and creating anti-nepotism ordinances so opportunities were given to all members of our community. We have worked to make all our citizens feel safe and valued, not only by rejecting hate, but also instituting programs, activities, and increase cross-cultural understanding, anticipation, respect, and unity. I have worked with the police department to help foster relationships and community engagement, where residents and families have block parties, where officers stop by to flip burgers and toss the basketball or two with the kids. From Coffee with the Cops, community engagement, from our police officers volunteer to support and teach sports team, from National Night Out, from bike rodeos, truck retreat, Smart Street program, and pedestrian safety. I have served on all the committees on this council. I have worked with four mayors over the years, and I have seen many management styles. And I hope I have taken the best from all of them. In my past 20 years-plus of service, I have reached across all communities, Orthodox, Blacks, White, Asian, and have formed longstanding and deep relationships by working with religious groups, organizations, to build bridges when we are faced with various racial and hate crime issues in our town from time to time. I have worked with such groups as Bridge Builders, Southside Pride, Human Relation, and the Human Relation. And I have brought my skills and expertise to many boards and commission by creating our first food pantry and bringing in service agencies to aid seniors, such as creating the senior prom, the holiday dinner, sightseeing tour for seniors, engagement program, intergenerational program, street naming for long-serving residents and volunteers in our town and for our local heroes, and especially our Zone 16 Teen Center. I served as finance chair, securing funding for Highland Park projects from state, federal, and local levels, such as securing funding for our fire engine, our police building, Open Space Pocket Park, our turf field, our first turf field that we put together in the high school, our downtown furniture. We call it the living room that we have down there now. Those welcoming banners that you see on the avenue, those were intentionally done to let people know that there's a welcoming place for all here in Highland Park. Small business block grant, road improvement, traffic light on Woodbridge Avenue, which took forever to get, but I didn't give up. Safe walk to school grant, pedestrian safety grant, and our neighborhood preservation grant in our Archard Heights community. I also cheered the economic development, which brought into Highland Park the creation of our Business Improvement District. We got state designation for Main Street Highland Park, first planting of cherry blossoms on Woodbridge Avenue. We were the first to have solar panels on our Borough building, and we were the first green community in the state of New Jersey. I have worked on cultural and entertainment projects, street fairs, autumn in the parks, horse and buggy ride for O.A. Those are some of the things that I did there. And now we are faced with another challenge. 15 years ago, Stop &amp; Shop wanted to leave, and we were able to get them to sign a 15-year lease. However, with the pandemic, they decided to leave. As you know, the pandemic has hit all major institutions in our country. We are actively working to get another supermarket in that location. Stop &amp; Shop is now in our redevelopment zone thanks to Councilmember Hale. We've been working with the councils of supermarkets to ensure that our community continues to enjoy the convenience of shopping, the convenience of shopping locally. We are exploring options for new supermarkets. Affordable housing. We created a tax-stable base to increase businesses in our downtown and create stability for our tax base. I have worked with the 15% Satisfied for New Construction for the senior housing and for Section 8 vouchers for seniors to create more housing. I have worked with the police department and Rutgers social work to aid the police department for mentally disturbed cause, for more grants for police training and community engagement, more opportunities for community conversations. My top three thing, and number one is safety. The next is affordability and downtown redevelopment. The next is affordability and downtown redevelopment. As you can see, I have done it all. It's 20 years-plus well spent. I'm up for the challenge. I have the, I have the requisites, knowledge, experience, and tenacity to move our community forward. As we face multiple challenges in our country, if chosen, I can do this job, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you all, to all three of you, for your statements, and we'll now proceed to the nomination portion of the meeting. I should indicate that the state law, which governs the vacancy filling, talks about filling the vacancy for mayor, and in this case, it has to be approved by a majority of the full membership of the council. And that means, in this case, there has to be four affirmative votes for the successful candidate. And as Councilman George pointed out, under our rules of order, a nominee may vote for themselves if and when they're nominated. So with those ground rules having been said, stated, I'll again ask if there are any nominations for the office of mayor for the remainder of 2023.
I nominate myself.
I'm going to nominate Acting Mayor Foster.
All right, is there a second for that nomination?
Second.
Second. All right. Are there any other nominations?
I'm going to nominate Councilman Hirsch.
Okay, we have a nomination. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, are there any further nominations?
I nominate Councilman Phil George.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we've run out of people, so. All right, first person nominated is the Acting Mayor, Elsie Foster, and I would ask that the clerk call the roll on the nomination of Ms. Foster to become the mayor for 2022/23.
Councilwoman Canavera.
This was a very hard decision. I respect and enjoy working with all of you, but I vote yes.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman George.
No.
Councilman Hale.
Again, this is a very, you saw the quality of the candidates that we have. Some excellent folks who put their name in the hat. I vote yes for Elsie.
Councilman Hirsch.
No.
Councilwoman Kim Choham.
The names are in alphabetical order, as you see here tonight. And this, this was a very hard and long, since 2023 has come in, and I just look forward to working with each and every one of my councilmembers, helping me as I chair Finance another difficult year, and my vote is yes for Councilwoman Foster.
Congratulations, Councilwoman.
I would like to take a moment to thank each and every one of you, my council colleagues, for your support. This has been a challenging one, and we have worked well in the past, and I'm confident that we will continue to work for the betterment and the quality of life for everyone here in Highland Park. Thank you for your support.
I'm mayor, so I'll stand, and I'll swear you in. Would you like to sit down, Mayor?
Yes.
I, Elsie Foster.
I, Elsie Foster.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Highland Park Borough Mayor.
Highland Park Borough Mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, thank you all. As mayor, I cannot sit as council president. Is there any nomination for council president?
I nominate Councilman Hirsch.
I nominate Councilwoman Kim Choham.
Is there a second?
Somebody nominated that first.
Oh, oh.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. And now we have.
I nominate Councilwoman Kim Choham.
Okay, is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Have there any other nominations? See, now there's none. We go to move to a roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera.
This is for Hirsch.
First, first nominated was.
First nomination, Councilmember Hirsch.
So this would be a vote for Councilman Hirsch to be council president.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster.
And she's the mayor.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
No.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Choham.
No.
Are you yes, two no?
Congratulations, you're the second. First vote, Harry.
There's a vacancy on council.
Mr. Hirsch received the majority of the council vote, so he was elected. You don't vote on that.
I'm sorry.
If you raise your right hand. I, Matthew Hirsch.
I, Matthew Hirsch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Highland Park Council President.
Highland Park Council President.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And I do further solemnly swear.
And I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of New Jersey.
And of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God, and so help me the people of Highland Park. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Now that ends our process, and I would move in favor for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor? We adjourn. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.